I would like to call the order, the October 7th, 2025 meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. Can the clerk please call roll call?
Certainly. Supervisor De Sera. Supervisor Cummings.
Here.
Martinez.
Present.
Hernandez.
Present.
Thank you Chair. You have court.
Thank you. Would any member of the board like to dedicate today's moment of silence? Supervisor Cummings?
Yes, thank you Chair. Today I'd like to dedicate today's moment of silence to Jeff DeAndrea. On Thursday, October 2nd, we were informed that County Public Health Division lost one of their employees, Jeff DeAndrea. Jeff was a Bonneville resident and served as Senior Public Health Investigator in the Communicable Disease Unit for over three years as a resident interic expert. He was a dedicated public health professional who participated in statewide policy development. Last year, Jeff played a key role in identifying, investigating, and coordinating the response to the Shigella outbreak, helping to protect the health and well-being of people experiencing homelessness and residents alike here in Santa Cruz County. He and his team were acknowledged and received recognition for their efforts at the 2024 Employee Recognition this past March for their efforts on the Shigella and syphilis response. Jeff had an innate ability to build trust and rapport with individuals from a wide range of socio-cultural backgrounds, brought thoughtful, unique perspectives to everything he did, and his presence elevated those around him. Jeff will be remembered and missed by family, friends, colleagues, and his community.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to see if the county executive officer, Palacios, is there any late additions or deletions to the regular or consent agenda?
There are no corrections today. Thank you.
Okay. I'll bring you back to the board to see if anyone would like to remove any items from the consent agenda. Or, okay. Moving on, I'll open it up to the public for public comment. You have two minutes for public comment on items not on the agenda.
Well, good morning. You guys are so close. My name is still James Hewing Whitman. How about a moment of silence for between the 600,000 and 800,000, mostly women and children that have been murdered and genocided by what is the state of Israel, the 51st, 52nd, or 53rd state in the United States? I mean, the state of Israel attacked the US liberty in 1967. Lyndon Johnson, the traitor, did a stand down. Now we have the Jesuit Zionist Bolshevik Nazi Donald J. Trump doing more of the same. So what's going on in this room? I mean, I'm not standing to pledge allegiance to the California or the US corporate pirate flag. You know, this author, Joe Heinmann, wrote three books. This is the back of the first one, The Metrocrats: Regionalism and Non-Law Governments Are Destroying the United States. For more than 15 years, Joe Heinmann has been known for an unyielding opponent to the alien ideas that have been turning the self-government of Americans into a grotesque replica of old world's divine rights and rulers. That corporate maritime pirate flag, that was established, what was it, February 23rd, 1871, in the triad, the city of London, Vatican City, and Washington DC? You guys are pledging allegiance to be corporate citizen slaves. Don't believe a word I say. Do your own research. So yeah, it is sad that there's more genocide going on, but what was the United States founded upon? Genocide and slavery. So it's just kind of more of the same. Anyway, it's, you know, nice to see all you guys, and I'd like to see some change, and I won't take up all the time. Thank you.
Is there anyone online? Sorry.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Becky Steinbruner. I note there is no agenda for today's special meeting your board is holding at 1:30 today in the Hotel Paradox next door. Why isn't that out with the regular agenda here for the public to see? It's also not posted in either of the two kiosks for public to see. Again, I protest your board holding a meeting in a hotel paradox that is costing a lot more than it's costing taxpayers to meet here. You shouldn't be doing this. And I was really offended to see that the CEO of Second Harvest Food Bank is on the panel to interview people there, as is the CEO of 3CE. What is going on here? Why are some invited to the table, but the public is excluded because it's closed session? I think you're violating the Brown Act by allowing these people to come and help select our next CAO. I want to say that I do not see on the closed session agenda discussion of litigation. I have filed case 25CV02808 writ of mandate regarding the Redman-Hara House. It is disgusting what you did to allow that to be demolished and have no provisions for providing the known buried Asian artifacts there or a biotic assessment. Finally, I want to say that I was privileged to be on a call with Mr. John Hazzar from Infinity, and I urge you to contact him. There are non-lithium battery technologies available, and you are getting ready to approve our county's best ordinance very soon. Without proper information, do not rely solely on the Commission on the Environment because it was never publicly vetted. Thank you.
My name is Nina Audino. My husband and I own a home in rural Coralitis and have been residents of Santa Cruz County for nearly 40 years. I'm appealing to you to reconsider certain statements made to you by the Chair of the Commission on the Environment in his recent recommendation reports summarizing the Commission's findings on BES. In his 21-page recommendation report, Chris Domhorse dedicates seven sentences to public comment. I urge you to reconsider this statement in particular, despite extensive conversation regarding the evidence presented. Some public comments continue to be skeptical, even questioning the balance of the information received at the workshops, given that it did not comport with their viewpoints. On behalf of the public, we aim to protect. The group's top lithium BES in Santa Cruz County presented 14 pages of factual information that addressed the scientific facts of lithium BES hazards, citing 24 academic, international, and national expert organizations. As part of those 14 pages, we asked why the Commission did not include a single expert research scientist in material science and engineering, chemical engineering, or electrical engineering, the research fields considered indispensable for a thorough knowledge of battery science, its applications and strengths, and also its dangers and risks. We also asked why the Commission invited the Director of California's premier BES lobby, CISA, Scott Murdisheau, to deliver a 45-minute presentation designed to discredit the feasibility of alternative non-lithium energy storage. Murdisheau's lobby is paid by BES developers whose interests are dominated by lithium projects. The COE also refused to consider or invite several potential speakers our group presented to them, including leading research scientists in battery science and representatives from a nationally leading non-lithium battery energy company, supported and promoted by the CEC, CAISO, and the CPUC. We will make the 14 pages of facts we presented available to all of you, all of you, in report format by email and delivered to your office. We appreciate a response from you. We urge you to consider this report carefully and also respecting our-
The speaker is the COE board. Thank you. How do I get information? Do I get it to the clerk?
Good morning. My name is Carol Bjorn. So if you had solar panels on your home and you wanted a battery energy storage solution for your home, let's say you were to go out and you would get at least two bids, right? You wouldn't just take the first person that offers you a battery energy storage facility for your home. So let's say you get at least two bids. The first guy, salesman A, comes in and tells you about his product, and you ask him, what are the downsides of your product? And he says, well, it's only going to last about eight years at the max, but it'll probably catch on fire before that. You'll have to shelter in place when it catches on fire, and then there'll be toxic materials on your home and in your yard. Then salesman B comes in and offers you his solution, and you ask him, what are the downsides to your product? And he says, well, it might be slightly more expensive than solution A. However, it's going to last 30 years. It's non-flammable. Okay? Which solution would you choose? Obviously, you'd choose B, right? You're investing in your home, and you want a safe solution for your home. This is option B. You have it in your hands. Both Becky and Nina talked about it to you. John Hazzar at Infinity has a vanadium flow battery. It's non-flammable. The ordinance that you guys are voting on in November needs to require that the BES facilities have non-flammable facilities. Anything less is below a standard for this community. We need to have safe battery energy storage facilities. Secondly, Chris Domhorse omitted John Hazzar from speaking at the Commission on the Environment workshops. He also omitted the public comment. So as Nina was just talking about, you guys need to be taking into account the public comment because it's been omitted from that report. And again, when you're voting on that ordinance, please make sure that it includes language that requires the non-flammability of the product in this storage facility. Thank you.
Good morning, board. My name is Tricia Weber, the Santa Cruz County Clerk, registrar of voters, and I'm here to talk to you today about the ballots for the November 4th election were mailed out last week. Most people received theirs on Friday, and voters are already turning in their ballots. Yesterday, we picked up over 1,000 ballots just from drop boxes in North County. Today's my South County run, so we'll see how that goes. And just as I was walking out the door, the post office showed up with about 700 through the mail. So this is, we do see a spike at the beginning, but this seems to be a little larger than normal, so I'm very excited that voters are voting. We have our 21 drop boxes across the county. They are picked up by department staff, and we will be processing them, meaning signature verification, the day that we receive them. In-person voting also started yesterday at three locations. We will open an additional location on October 25th, 14 more on November 1st, and four more on Election Day for a grand total of 24 locations that any voter can go to, return the ballot they received in the mail, obtain a replacement ballot, or vote in person. I also want to take this time to alert everyone to a rule change for the United States Postal Service. The rule was implemented in 2024 and is now fully in effect across the nation. For any mail that is deposited in a mailbox that is more than 50 miles away from a regional processing center, it will not be postmarked the day it was put into the box. I want to say that again. Any post off or any mailbox that is more than 50 miles away from a regional processing center will receive a postmark the following day. The nearest regional processing center for Santa Cruz County is in Richmond. That is more than 50 miles away. So I'm getting ready to drop my mail into the box right outside the door here, well before the pickup time, but it will not be receiving a postmark until tomorrow. And I'm over my time, but I'm going to keep going because ballots need to be postmarked on or before Election Day in order to be considered timely. And this is an opportunity to start reeducating us consumers of the post office that our postmarks are going to happen a day later. So we have always said, if you still have the ballot envelope in your hand a week before the election, it's best for you to put it in a drop box or take it to a in-person voting location, or if you must mail it, walk inside and have it hand-postmarked. I need to, we're not changing that messaging, but I want to start reiterating it so we become more educated as mail consumers. Our postmarks will be one day later. Please note that. Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Call-in user one, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I would really like to see a government of, for, and by the people, not of, for, and by contaminating murderous corporations. And we could actually name those corporations. I agree with the comments of the public speakers today and urge you to follow the recommendations of Central Water District and their attorneys regarding the proposed energy storage facilities within the Central Water District sphere of influence. You have all received a copy of this letter. It starts out, "I affirm as general counsel to the Central Water District, which is a special water district located in Santa Cruz County. The firm I am writing on behalf of the District Board of Directors, who express the District's strong opposition to the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors regarding the installation of the proposed battery energy storage system facility in Aton, California. The District has many concerns regarding the proposed project and its potential negative impacts on our community." And I will add, you have heard from the public on these negative impacts that are well-known. The letter concludes towards the end. "The proposed project presents an unacceptable risk to the health and safety of our customers and community. This letter serves as an official protest against the project. The District respectfully requests that the County Board of Supervisors reject the proposed project location." End of sentence. I would add, if anything is toxic, it should be prohibited. And add to the comments about it should be proved non-flammable and non-toxic. How outrageous to agree to anything that poisons the community, especially when you have the evidence. Thank you. Vote no.
Call-in user 628, your microphone's now available.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, hi, this is Rich Buckingham again. I'd like to read another section of a book called The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines by Santa Cruz's own Leon Cantaro. This section is called Other Critics of Vaccinations. Alfred Russell Wallace was a British naturalist, explorer, geographer, biologist, and anthropologist who was best known for independently formalizing the theory of evolution at the same time as Charles Darwin. He wrote in 1898, quote, "Vaccination is a gigantic delusion. It has never saved a single life. But that it has been the cause of so much disease, so many deaths, such a vast amount utterly needless and altogether undeserved suffering, that it will be classed by the coming generation among the great, as among the great heirs of an ignorant and prejudiced age, in its penal enforcement, the foulest blot on the generally beneficent course of legislation during our century." Another author, J.T. Biggs, sanitation engineer for Leister, which is in England, 1912, wrote, "There is but little, but vaccination in Leister now, no smallpox, and the death rate from the seven principal cymotics has fallen in 18, 1908 to 1910. What has achieved this astounding revolution? Certainly not vaccination. It is the direct outcome of active, persistent, and solid progress in sanitation, which, in its broadest sense, covers the entire exclusion of absolutely insanitary and disease-diffusing practice of cowpoxing." Mahatma Gandhi expressed his view about vaccinations in 1921 by writing, "Vaccination is a barbarous practice and one of the most fatal of all the delusions current in our time. Conscientious objections to vaccination should stand alone, if need be, against the whole world in defense of their conviction." Thank you.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. With that, I'll bring you back to the board to, if the board has any questions or comments, I'd like to entertain a motion. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you Chair, and good morning, everybody. I'm going to start off by thanking our county clerk, Tricia Weber, for being here this morning and for bringing us items number 14 and 15 from the Elections Department, which is related to the implementation and costs and printing costs of the election that's coming up now and completed on November 4th. I want to thank you for the reminder to get those ballots in. We're currently in this election. I received my ballot this week, and I'm happy to fill that out. And I really want to commend the Elections Department for pulling this off time and time again. You know, this is the type of project that, you know, it's not like other projects. You can't just start early or ask for more time. When the governor calls a special election, we need to jump into action and fulfill the requirements. So thank you so much for that. And, you know, just a reminder to the public that this is a very important election. Please get your ballots in, go out and vote, and let's make all this effort worthwhile. I also want to make a brief comment on item number 16, which is to authorize up to $240,000 in one-time bridge funding to sustain Head Start services through October 31st and take related actions. I'm going to be abstaining from this action in support of a previous commitment that I made that for the first year in office, I will not be taking votes on Encompass-related contracts due to my prior employment there. However, I do want to take an opportunity to thank our CEO, our HSA and HSD Departments, the Office of Education, as well as First Five for working together with Encompass to bring this before the board. I'm, you know, very much in support of this and want to thank you for your efforts to sustain these very important services. That concludes my comments.
Thank you Chair. Just a brief comment on item 27, the retroactive amendment to CalWest Lighting and Signal Maintenance. I just want to use this opportunity to thank Public Works for continuing to move the SoCal Drive project forward. You know, this item relates specifically to inspecting all the smart lights that were installed, as well as the fiber optic cable that was installed along SoCal Drive in order to make those all work. Those are, are and will continue to be a huge improvement for traffic management in our community, and I'm excited to see this, this project almost complete, hopefully accepted by December, and then, of course, the second phase of this project continuing all the way down to Freedom. So thanks again to our Public Works Department.
Supervisor Cummings?
Supervisor Cummings? Thank you Chair. Items numbers 14 and 15, also want to thank the Elections Department for all their hard work on making sure that we continue to have free and fair elections and that elections are accessible to folks. And also just want to thank them for getting the voter guides out. I know a couple of years ago, there have been some issues around that, and just want to appreciate the improvements to making sure that those voter guides got out before the ballots were dropped. And I know a lot of people have expressed appreciation around that, so just want to thank you all. Item number 16, I also want to share the comments that were expressed by Supervisor Martinez. I just want to thank the board for, or thank CEO Palacios and county staff for being able to come up with this funding to help bridge this Head Start program, and my hope is that we can continue to see that program operate moving forward, given the amount of support it provides for children and families in our community. Item number 17, this is something that many folks in the community have been pushing for, which is to designate the San Laredo River mouth as a California historic landmark, just given the historic relevance it has around surfing. It was one of the first, it was the first site where surfing was done in the continental United States, and from there, surfing has proliferated throughout the world. And just want to acknowledge the historic significance of that site, and my hope is that the California Parks Commission will, will also move forward with supporting that effort. And then item number 18, I just want to thank county staff and the Integrated Ways Management Task Force for providing comments on Senate Bill 54. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Supervisor De Sera.
Thank you. I'd like to express my happy congratulations to our OR3 for the unanticipated revenue of Congratulations, and that will continue to support emergency readiness in our county. I'm going to ask a question about item 24, and I don't know if Connie, I think Connie might be the person who could answer that question. So this is an amendment to a contract with the County Office of Education, and just over a million dollars. And I know Dr. Sabah isn't here, so I'm not sure you could answer this, but historically, funding from the COE hasn't really been spread equitably throughout the county. So with this extra money, are there plans to help and serve the kids of the Pajaro Valley?
Good morning, Connie Monoprazza, Director of Health Service Agency. So that, that is the, in the counties that I've worked at, that has been the, the procedure that is followed. The COE is the lead agency in behavioral health. We are the co-applicant, we're the pass-through department in HSA. So that is the, the process that is followed. In other counties, we can definitely follow up with Dr. Sabah.
That would be great.
Yeah. I can follow up.
And, and under land use, item 26, I was very disappointed to see that we are rescinding an award for storm-related repairs on Eureka Canyon Road. It looks like, and there, there were problems with the bonding of the agency that won the award, so it appears that we're going back out. But, you know, our rural roads need help, and so hopefully we can get that done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the Elections Department for the timely public services announcement. Everyone be sure to vote. And on item 16, I really want to thank our CEO, our county, COE, First Five, everyone that helped make this happen. This was going to be over 250 families affected, mostly in South County, without childcare. So thank you to all those that made it happen. And item 24, I'd like to see the, the results of what schools are being affected or what schools are being funded and which ones aren't, specifically in South County, I would say. All right, with that, I'll bring you back to the board to see if anyone would like to entertain a motion. We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig. Can we take roll call vote?
Supervisor De Sera.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye, although I abstain from item 16.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Consider approving in concept an ordinance repealing and replacing chapters 9.57 of the Santa Cruz County Code relating to abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, or inoperative vehicles and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Supervisor Koenig for the presentation.
Thank you Chair Hernandez. So this is, of course, a revisit of the item that we heard first on August 19th. The purpose of this ordinance update is, or code update, is really to ensure that the county has the ability to enforce its, its code prohibiting parking on county streets for over 72 hours. This is a need that was first brought to my attention by the Sheriff's Office that was having trouble getting tow companies to respond to towing requests of specific vehicles. And as, next slide, please. As was mentioned, the last time I heard this item, you know, we do have some vehicles that have been ticketed tens of times. The one above there in the picture, I think, has been ticketed over 30 times, and others that have been ticketed as many as 100 times. Since we last heard this item, and there were some suggestions from the board, functionally the ordinance has been updated to include the requirement that the notice be both sent and posted on the vehicles themselves in Spanish. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Again, this is, you know, really the functional difference between our current code and what's being proposed, is the ability to dismantle vehicles once they are towed, but there is still a storage period of 10 days. And one way to think of this is that instead of the vehicle being stored in the tow yard, it's simply being stored on the street for 10 days. And so, you know, really, there's still ample warning before any enforcement action happens. Next slide, please. Another direction from this Board after our first discussion of this item was some concern about vehicles that are inoperable but occupied, and also a request that we go out and talk to the City of Santa Cruz about their safe parking program. So, a few items there, or if, we've done a few things on those fronts. So, first, of course, this Board passed the encampment response guidelines at our last meeting, and those do apply to encampments, two vehicles or more would be considered encampments, and so those guidelines would, would be in effect when law enforcement is responding to those situations. Second of all, you can see within the item itself, within the memo, we've cited the Santa Cruz County Sheriff's Office Policy Manual, Section 428. This is the, the current policy manual for the Sheriff's Office, and it states, 428.2 Field Contact states that deputies are encouraged to consider long-term solutions to problems that may relate to the homeless, such as shelter referrals and counseling in lieu of physical arrest. And there's some more in there that you can read. Really, this just emphasizes that our deputies are going to take or make every effort to find alternative solutions before resorting to the code proposed today that would actually involve notice and tow. That said, they, we do need some enforcement capabilities because ultimately, there is no incentive for bad actors to engage with our Sheriff's Office at all and work through those solutions. So, then, the final piece was, was speaking with the City of Santa Cruz about their safe parking program on August 28th. I had the opportunity to talk to the city's Director of Homelessness Response and Community Programs, Laurie M. Wally. I said a couple of things. You know, first of all, there was, we need some clarity at the last meeting about whether or not the city's program is at capacity, or whether or not they want additional sites. So, to clarify, the, the city's program does have enough parking sites today, but they don't have a lot of additional capacity if there was increased demand. The other thing is because they recently took off a couple of sites out of their program due to the downtown library project, so it's four and nine, they don't have the same ability that they used to, to rotate the sites and therefore reduce impact of the program on any specific location. And so, they did say that they would appreciate the ability, appreciate any additional sites so that they could continue to, to rotate sites, and that not every site was being utilized every night. Another thing they, sort of one of the lessons learned they offered was that less visible sites are better, to the extent that they really, they, they don't want the site to sort of be seen generally as a place where anyone can park overnight. They really wanted it to be limited to program participants, and I think it was particularly with the downtown library site, Lot 4, that when that was in use, they would have people drive by and sort of join in, in parking for overnight, even though they weren't officially program participants, and that they were also some of the more difficult folks to work with. So, they suggested that any additional sites be considered for, being a little bit more out of the way, less visible from major thoroughfares. They also did note that it, the, the current program is purely a parking program, and there really hasn't been any coordination with outreach services to help people experiencing homelessness. And so, one of the recommendations in the item before us today is that we do increase collaboration with our Housing for Health Division, actually contacting program participants who feel that folks who are, you know, taking, making the effort to enroll in this program are really doing everything they can to comply with the law, be good citizens, and that actually, that would make them excellent candidates to experience success with any additional services offered. And then, finally, one more of the lessons learned from the city's program was that, right now, the program operates from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, and that's helpful, but one of the things that program participants have asked for is being able to park in any specific location for up to 24 hours. The reason being, they, you know, they, they have lives, and in order to go to work, go to a doctor's appointment, do anything else throughout the day, they have to have a place that they can park. And so, being able to park in one location for a full 24 hours would facilitate them doing those things. And it's not a problem that if they have to, you know, so much to move from one day to the next, so much as it's just, they, they need the ability to continuously park for up to 24 hours. So, all that is in effect, again, including the recommended actions today, and that item, or I should say, Recommended Action 4 directs the county's Housing for Health staff to coordinate with the City of Santa Cruz staff to engage with participants in the city's safe parking program and to connect them with existing housing-related supportive services, service, services and resources. Recommended Action 5 is to direct the county's Housing for Health staff to coordinate with the City of Watsonville, because obviously, the program would, would operate county-wide, and we anticipate there could be some impact in Watsonville as well. So, to engage with the City of Watsonville staff, to engage residents that may be affected by this ordinance, and to connect, connect them with existing housing-related supportive services. And six, to direct the county's Housing for Health staff to work with the City of Santa Cruz to explore additional safe parking sites to be considered and approved by the Board of Supervisors and report back at the November 18th Board meeting. That completes my summary. We do have our Housing for Health Division Director, Robert Ratner, here, and also Chair Hernandez. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add.
Would Dr. Ratner like to say anything before I take it up to the public?
I wanted to say, thank you for having me here. I know I was not present at the last meeting, but I'm really here to answer questions from the Board. So, if there was any discussion after public comment that you have, I'll be here to respond to any of those questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address us on this item?
Yeah. My name is James Ewing Whitman. Thank you, Manny, for the presentation. I read through that material again. There were some things that have changed. I suppose my first, I mean, there's, it seems like it's a lot. It's pretty reasonable. It really seems pretty reasonable. But I suppose my first question would be, City of Santa Cruz Police Officers and City of Santa Cruz Public Works, will the Santa Cruz Sheriff's Department be called out to ticket and arrest those officers and those Public Works people for not following this? I certainly hope so, because I've heard at least 20 or 30 horror stories of, it's like the Keystone Cops. Who do you talk to? Oh, talk to the police. Oh, talk to Public Works. So, the City of Santa Cruz is in Santa Cruz County. So, overall, I, after reading it over, you know, I, there's some things that, I'm not really that objectionable, because it does seem like there is some communication. There was an individual that came in who was a general contractor, had his motorhome parked in front of a project that he was working on, went on vacation for two weeks and came back and the vehicle was gone. So, interesting things happened. I mean, I suppose if that were to happen to me, and that vehicle were destroyed, I would hope there'd be real hell to pay. But as far as the difficult situation that law enforcement in the United States is being put into, these are ordinances. I haven't extensively looked to see where these are California state laws, but I know the last time I couldn't find them, and these are all ordinances. These are not state laws. And it's only people being thrown under the bus, more than emergency responders in law enforcement, are teachers and youth. I mean, earlier, I'm just gonna say it, talking about those flock cameras, the 27 different intersections, law enforcement has already been replaced by the commercial streetlights. And so, we need them to arrest the criminals. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. Thank you for bringing this back to the Board. I don't understand how towing a vehicle to a tow yard where it's going to cost maybe $800 or more dollars to retrieve it is really going to accomplish what I think we really want to do, and that's to get the, these vehicles out of the neighborhoods, but also help the people who are stuck in them. I, I think that the county likely owns land that these vehicles could be taken to, and the owners would not be charged exorbitant fees, ransom money is what it is, to get their vehicles and be in tears because they have to watch it be, although they have, be dismantled. I ask that you reach out to the faith-based community. I know there is a parking lot in Aptos at Resurrection Church. They do allow people to park there. Why can't we make agreements with the faith-based community to maybe have a rotating locations where people can go? That doesn't solve the issue of the vehicles that are broken down and inoperable. So, I urge you to launch a pilot program. You found $240,000 to kick, to bridge, fund, head start. Maybe some of these kids are in these vehicles. Why not start a pilot program working with local mechanics to help fix these vehicles enough so that they can be operable, and these people can move around and go to places that are not going to cause problems with the neighbors or cause their vehicle to be towed? What, what is the number of vehicles we're looking at? What has been towed? How many have been towed?
Thank you.
What are the numbers? Thank you.
Is there anyone online that would like to address us on this item?
Yes, Chair. Call-in user one, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, I recall a testimony on this item previously, and it seems like it should be retitled "War on the Poor" because of the accounts of people who are living in those vehicles, if they're only home, and being towed and dismantled. They don't do that with other vehicles, fancy cars that are towed, do they? I think we have a structural problem here of capitalism, where we have more and more poor people, while what is it, the three top wealthiest people own as much wealth as the bottom half of this country. We need some kind of redistribution of wealth, in my opinion. I, I think this, it doesn't help much to solve the structural problem that we have, and I consider it quite vicious. Becky Steinbruner's recommendations seem sensible and should be followed. I often contrast what I saw when I was in the former Soviet Union in 1966, and there weren't homeless people, there was housing, they had free medical care at that time, there were not people on the streets mistreated like it's going on. I consider this very unethical, this kind of war on people who are disadvantaged because of the system largely that we're existing in.
Thank you.
Kathy, your microphone's now available.
Hello, my name's Kathy Lass. I live in Aptos, and I am still opposed to this, this, this ordinance rewrite, but I do want to appreciate the work that's gone in to explain what's going to happen. But I still feel like it's a draconian, a draconian way to treat people who are the most vulnerable. If we do pass this ordinance, I would request that there's data gathered and, and oversight so that we can have some kind of report after a year of how many people have been affected by this, how, what criteria was used, what, what categories did they fall in? So, I, I want to just reiterate, I do oppose this ordinance, and I will, would appreciate some kind of oversight. Lastly, I just want to note that at the beginning of this presentation, unfortunately, the online sound was disabled, and there wasn't any way to notify anyone. So, I'm curi, like, I would want to, to figure out what to do when that happens, because that would make this, that this single agenda item was not gonna be available to me because of the disabled sound. Thank you.
Ally, your microphone's now available. Ally, your microphone's now available. If you're calling in from a phone, please use star six to mute or unmute yourself.
Great, thank you. Hello, Board, I'm a resident here in SoCal. I urge the city to approve the 9.57 update, code update, to enforce oversized vehicle parking regulations in public right-of-ways, where particularly in our neighborhood, there's a large, long-term vehicle blocking visibility and access to the only safe entrance from our neighborhood out onto SoCal Drive. This vehicle's in a public right-of-way, and it creates some quite tricky and dangerous blind spots for drivers going in and out of a gas station on the corner, and it also discourages youth on bikes and pedestrians from driving and walking along the safest route, forcing many of our neighbors to shoot out onto a street that has no sidewalks and multiple blind turns. So, I'm currently pregnant, and I worry about driving in and out of our neighborhood and walking this way due to these hazards. And so, I really support early enforcement and education around available human resources for folks living in their vehicles, and I think that would prevent these traffic issues before vehicles break down permanently and make it harder to relocate in a place that's really safer and a safer parking spot for everyone. So, thank you for considering this important safety issue.
Alicia, your microphone's now available.
Thank you. I actually expected to get a invite to this meeting from Manny's office. I was told by his assistant that when this came upon the agenda, I'd be notified, and I wasn't. So, I'm a little upset that I can't be there in person. The homeless union, the Santa Cruz Homeless Union is opposed to this ordinance. We requested that a safe parking expansion be done for the safe parking programs that are currently working. The Tier 3 parking program is currently working, although no one wants to expand it because it's expensive. So, if this ordinance moves forward, the homeless union requests that a exemption be made to anybody that is on the safe parking waiting list. That includes the daily use, and that includes the Tier 3 safe parking. If you're on a safe parking waiting list and you're trying to comply with the city and with the resources available, I don't think that you should have your RV demolished. You're trying to find a safe place to park, you're trying to comply. And I also want to talk about the fact that we're only talking about 10 vehicles in this ordinance. 10 vehicles are what we're talking about. And I also want to discuss the fact that the EHV vouchers that were used to house a lot of people that were previously in RVs, that funding is about to end by the County Housing Authority. I've been sending out alerts and memos, about 425 people About four hundred and twenty-five people that got emergency Section Eight vouchers and were housed are going to lose that funding in fifteen months. I know you've helped head start in that situation. I'm asking you to look at the impending emergency that's about to happen because you're about to get a lot more homeless people if something doesn't happen with that funding, and I myself am one of those people. I could end up in an RV again, and if that happens, you destroy my RV, we're in an entirely new discussion. So please, please, please think about this and exempt anybody who's on that safe parking waiting list.
I see no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. Before I bring it back to the board, I'd like to see if Lieutenant Nick Baldridge would like to address any of the questions or say, add additional comments.
Thank you, good morning. I think the overall is the intent of this. The intent isn't to do a massive sweep and get every RV off, it's to actually have a leverage point so that we can try and get cooperation into finding solutions. So right now, because people know that we have an inability to tow RVs, they're less involved in any sort of outreach that we're doing or any sort of contacts that we're doing. The intent of this isn't to mass demolish RVs, and the bigger issue is those RVs are stagnant for long periods of time. This isn't the RV that moves daily, this is the RV that is in the same place for weeks, if not months, on end. And so the number is low right now of the actual RVs that this would impact, but the big piece, and for us, is what the intent of the ordinance is and how we're going to address it at the sheriff's office. And really, that is to help leverage that cooperation to find a long-term solution that isn't taking the RV. If we can find a solution that gets us to the endpoint, it's a win for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. You could probably stay up there, we'll have some questions, Dr. Ratner, too. I'll bring you back to the board for any comments or questions. Supervisor Cummings.
Thank you. I'm going to follow up on exactly what you just said because you touched on, I think, the biggest concern that I have with what's before us today. So I'm just going to give a hypothetical scenario. Let's say there's a Honda Civic, it's been parked on the side of a street, and it's been there for, who knows, a week or what have you, and notice has been applied, ten days has gone by, are those vehicles currently being towed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because this is the biggest concern that I have with this, with what's before us today, is that it appears to really, the intent, exactly what Lieutenant Baldridge just said, is for it to specifically address inoperable RVs. But what's before us today is inoperable vehicles. My understanding is that, and I think to Lieutenant Baldridge's point, is that cars and vans are being towed if they are abandoned on the side of the road. They go to the tow yards, they sit in the tow yards for a period of time, if they're not picked up, then eventually they get demolished. Or sold. Correct. And so because of the fact that we're not distinguishing between RVs and vehicles, what this policy says is that now if a car or any type of vehicle is abandoned on the side of the road, that it will get the ten-day notice and then it will be demolished, which I don't think is the intent of this ordinance. I think the intent of this is really to go after inoperable RVs. Additionally, I think that even through what we've been hearing, there's a lot of confusion. I mean, if this, if this is specifically supposed to deal with inoperable and abandoned vehicles, I mean, that's one thing, but then now we're bringing in safe parking programs, operational RVs, like, that's, that's not what this is dealing with. And so, you know, I think that while these are related issues, they're conflated and they're actually discrete issues that should be dealt with separately, because, I mean, if we have a vehicle that someone is living in, I don't think that, as reading through the ordinance, it's not called out specifically that there has to be, that the sheriffs have to engage in service provisions, or there has to be a connection with Housing for Health Division, which is another concern that I have as well within this, the current ordinance as it's written. So, I mean, personally, and I can go on because I have some other issues, too, and maybe I'll, and I don't know if you want to sit up, you can take a seat for a second if you want, because I don't think I need to ask you or you answer my question. But I will say that, you know, as it relates to, so first is that I think these things should be separated. It seems that what would be best is that we bring an update to Chapter nine point five seven that specifically addresses inoperable RVs, which I don't disagree with the recommendations by my colleagues, that if there's an inoperable vehicle that's been sitting on the street, I mean, that technically is taking up public property, right? And it's privatizing public property. And so I don't disagree that, you know, if an RV is there for ten days plus, they can't move it, that if someone's living in, I think it's important that we connect them to services. If not, this, I think that this option actually is reasonable because rather than it's sitting in a yard and collecting fees, it's actually sitting on the street for ten days and they're not getting charged anything. And so I do think that it's reasonable that if a vehicle is stalled or it's inoperable, not a vehicle, sorry, an RV, is stalled and inoperable on our streets for an extended amount of time, I think it makes sense for us to, you know, have this as an option. But doing that to cars, I don't think is appropriate because we already have policies in place that are working and they're already being towed. As it relates to the safe parking program, what's confusing about it is that right now, the way that the safe parking program works and the reason why it's required is because of the fact that the city's ordinance does not allow for parking within the coastal zone between a certain amount of time, I think it's from like twelve to six AM, something like that. And as a result, based on the Coastal Commission, because that's denying access, they're requiring that these safe parking programs be put in place. I actually followed up with the Coastal Commission and Coastal staff did say that this is, that's very different from denying access to having an abandoned vehicle within the coastal zone, and there's no requirement for us to require safe parking for a vehicle that's been abandoned or that is inoperable. And so it's confusing why we're associating these two items, because I don't think the intent would be we tow an inoperable vehicle to one of these safe parking programs and then we leave it there. And so I just don't see how that fits within the safe, how this abandoned vehicle ordinance fits within the recommendations around the safe parking program. I'll also say that we, that I meet with C O's office, with our Housing for Health Division, and with Randy Morris from HSD, we meet monthly with the City of Santa Cruz to discuss all the issues around homelessness, including safe parking. About a year or two ago, about a year or so ago, we had been exploring opportunities to expand safe parking, and then the city kind of backed off because they haven't had issues with overcrowding, their services haven't been full, and even with the, where the library, Lot Four coming offline, they still haven't seen their services full. So, I mean, I'm happy to take these conversations back to the one-by-one with the city, but even, I mean, we met a couple of weeks ago and this topic didn't come up in terms of the need for more expanded safe parking in the city. So while I appreciate the intent of what we're trying to accomplish here today, I think that there are, again, different issues that we need to take in different pieces, because, again, like, if we want to talk about inoperable RVs, which it sounds like that's a problem, that's what we should be updating within Chapter nine point five seven, rather than, you know, conflating all vehicles and, you know, recommending that we destroy any vehicle that's been left on the street for, you know, after seventy-two hours, give them ten days, and then we just go destroy their vehicles. The last thing I want to say, too, within the ordinance, I was confused by Section nine point five seven point zero four zero exemptions. There's two exemptions within this chapter, which is a vehicle or parts thereof which is stored or parked on private property in connection with the business of a licensed dismantler, licensed vehicle dealer, or junkyard, or a vehicle or parts thereof that's completely enclosed within a building in a lawful manner, which is not visible from the street, or other public or private property. My concern here is that if those are the only two exemptions, what about vehicles that are on private property, where they are visible, where the person doesn't have, it's not a business or a licensed dismantler, it's just a resident? Because my understanding is that this was supposed to apply to public property, and then all of a sudden, there's this exemption for private property, which can be confusing because is that to say now that if there's an inoperable vehicle on private property that it could be subject to these same rules and regulations?
I think, I think I can, I can help.
Sure, that'd be helpful.
The answer to that question is that the county has had problems in the past with residents who will effectively have ten or fifteen or twenty cars out on their property that will essentially end up creating a public nuisance, and they've been treated as a public nuisance at times by code enforcement, gone in and got court orders to clean properties up because it's impacted neighborhoods. And I, I think that's the distinction, is that if, if cars are in buildings and they can't be seen, they're not disrupting the neighborhood and they're not causing a larger problem, but perhaps the other supervisors could weigh in, but I think that's what that's directed towards.
Can I ask a follow-up, then?
Of course.
Because in that case, would a sheriff then be able to enter private property without the permission of the property owner and begin to tag these vehicles? I'm just trying to get a sense of how this would.
No, 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 the sheriff, the sheriff can't go onto private property without a warrant and, and start taking enforcement action on, on private property.
So I guess, as it pertains to this ordinance, then, because this ordinance talks about, you know, when and where sheriffs can go and tag vehicles and provide these notices, and so.
That's on public property. So, 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 yeah, so the sher-, the sher-, the sher-, the sheriffs are not operating on, on private property.
Okay, it's just, I mean, I guess, again, pointing out why this is confusing.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I think that there is an opportunity to build consensus and to have an ordinance that gets unanimous support, specifically if it's, you know, really focusing on updating Chapter nine point five seven to specifically address inoperable RVs, but as the recommendations are before us, I find them to be confusing. I, again, you know, have been, we've been working with Housing for Health with the city. I think that there's a way for us to continue having conversations, too. If we want to, you know, talk about safe parking, we can talk with the city about it, but I just think that the recommendations before us, for me, are confusing, and I'll end my comments there.
So before I move on to additional comments, questions, I want to see if the, anyone from Lieutenant Baldridge or Dr. Ratner would like to add to that, or Supervisor Koenig.
Sure, I can mention, you know, the, the proposed change is really, as far as a violation, nine point five seven oh six oh, just say that it only applies to a public street or highway or county property. And so I think that nine dot five seven dot oh four are exemptions that Supervisor Cummings referred to as really sort of just an abundance of caution, that it's saying this ordinance does not apply to abandoned, wrecked, or inoperable vehicles on private property, but there's nothing in here that would suggest that it applies on private property.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the board?
Sorry, I did one other thing to say that was not a response, which is, I mean, it was mentioned during public comment that we should work with the Association of Faith Communities on potentially expanding their safe parking program. Of course, the county does have an existing contract with the Association of Faith Communities to operate a safe parking program, and I believe it's staff's intention to explore options with them as they look at additional safe parking sites as well. But if there's anything that Dr. Ratner wants to add, please.
Thanks, Supervisor Koenig. I did want to clarify a little bit based on the public comment. We do, as a county, have a contract with the Association of Faith Communities. The total contract is for over six hundred thousand dollars. It's a mix of one-time state funding, which you heard about at our last meeting, and some county contributions to the work of our office. Some of it is based on the generous nature of local citizens who voted to support some tax measures, that's helping to fund some of these programs. Right now, A F C has sixty safe parking places around the county. Last year, we extended the program to cover both South and North County, and they estimate that it costs around seven thousand three hundred dollars per year to manage the parking program. That particular program includes using land that's owned by faith-based organizations and having staff from their agency provide supportive services to the folks that participate in the program. The program operates typically between six PM and eight AM, not twenty-four hours. And the one thing that I've heard from the staff who are directly involved with the program, there are individuals who are living in their vehicles who may not be able to afford to pay for registration, insurance, repairs to vehicles, and they feel that if there was more resources available, which is a challenge that I know you all are struggling with, to help people pay for those things, because their program requires that vehicles are in operating condition, that the driver is registered and has a valid driver's license, the car is registered, and the vehicle's insured to participate in the program. So that does leave out some folks who are living in their vehicles. And if there was an additional pot of money, I don't know where that comes from, to help address some of those needs, then more people could participate in the program. And Supervisor Koenig says there are multiple locations throughout the county that A F C is operating. I did check in with them. If there are more resources, they'd be open to expanding the program, but it's a question of locations and resources.
Thank you. Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you. I, I want to start off just by thanking my colleagues, Chair Hernandez and Supervisor Koenig, for continuing to work on this item. You know, I know that our board is trying to strike a balance between addressing the impact of abandoned or inoperable oversized vehicles on the community's well-being, with the need to respond to housing and security issues in a humane, effective way, and it's my understanding from reading the report, it really, we're talking about five or six vehicles currently, and that might be what we'd expect annually that we're, we're working on today. You know, our office in D five, we have received calls about large abandoned vehicles that have been parked for years, and residents do find it frustrating when they feel like our laws aren't being enforced or that nothing can be done. You know, even if the law is broken, it, it does undermine really people's belief in the usefulness of government and our laws and our ability to get things done. So I am really committed to trying to resolve this. Also, you know, people who are living in their vehicles, they are considered unhoused, right? And so we aren't fooling ourselves to believe that by towing their vehicles, we're fixing a problem, or we're, we're solving this, it's, you know, we have challenges with unhoused individuals in this community for a variety of reasons, and this is one of the symptoms of that major challenge in our community. I think the proposed ordinance language is getting us closer to achieving our goals, and I, I feel closer or pretty good about being able to support that today. I do have a couple of outstanding questions. After I reviewed the discussion that we had on August nineteenth and the direction that the board took, and so I'm hoping that maybe you can help to kind of square up some of One thing is that it says in the minutes of the August sixteenth meeting that the board directed Housing Matters staff provide a presentation on the engagement policies for inhabited vehicles. And I, and I, actually, I, I don't recall that part of the direction, to be perfectly honest. I'm wondering if that was a hope that H four H would be involved, and I, and I'm wondering, since you're here, Dr. Ratner, can you speak to the relationship that Housing Matters has with doing outreach to people living in these vehicles, so we can just, they're not here to give a presentation, but maybe you can answer the intent of this question?
Yes, thanks for that question. So similar to our contract with this A F C for safe parking, we have a contract with Housing Matters. They were the bidder selected to work with our office and the Sheriff Committee Policing Unit on Outreach to people who are unsheltered and including people living in their vehicles in unincorporated areas of the county. That program had started with some one-time federal funding that is winding down, a theme. But the current program, the sheriff office contacts a member of our staff, will reach out to them periodically to see if there's any particular areas we need to conduct outreach. Housing Matters staff are deployed. We have a policy for what we call connectors, who work in our system of care, and they're instructed, once they get a referral of someone to their program, and if they have the right staff capacity at that moment, we expect them to try to engage that person within five days, and attempt three specific attempts in person and other means to try to connect with that individual, including emergency contacts or secondary contacts and ancillary information. And then we expect that within a fifteen-day period, they would be able to notify us and the sheriff that they were able to build a rapport and start a process of enrolling them in services. So that's the current expectation.
Great. Thank you for that explanation, that's helpful. My next question is just helping me, making sure the entire board is, is clear on what the costs are associated with the program. I saw in the board letter that we already have ten thousand dollars assigned to vehicle abatement, that this might cost. that this might cost, no, we have $60,000 and this might cost $10,000. Is that $10,000 of that? Is this something you see currently in the budget?
It, it could be. It's a, it's an estimate of about 1,500 per RV if we were to tow it. And that's an average because based on which district it comes out of, is which, there's, there's a different pricing scale depending on the tow company and how far they have to go. So that's literally just an estimate based on the numbers that we're looking at, the average per vehicle cost if we were to utilize all of that. But yes, that would, as of right now, still sit in that vehicle abatement budget. It just might incur some of that.
Thanks. And are you confident, Matt Baldridge, that the tow companies are willing to follow through with this ordinance change, assuming we make it? Because I think that, what I understand is that now they're, they're not willing to tow the vehicles because it's expensive to store them and they don't want to, but that with this ordinance change, they would be more likely to because they can dismantle vehicles immediately. Do we feel like this, this is the, we feel confident that this change is going to have the outcome we're hoping for?
It's less of a cost issue for the tow companies and more of a space issue.
Okay.
Because of the size of the, the RVs, when they go to these tow yards, which are already very compact in space to begin with, they don't, they have to hold them for, I think it's 15 days before they can take their next action. Because of that piece of it, they're not willing to take them to their tow yards. They have indicated that if they were to go to the dismantler, that they would take those, because then it's just a tow, it's a cost of their tow piece of it, and it's not the storage, mainly the space that's impacted, because all the, all the local tow yards are fairly small.
Great, thank you. And just to respond to two things that I heard callers talk about, one was the city's safe parking waitlist. I think we asked about that last meeting and we heard there wasn't, I, I don't actually, I'm not clear if there was a waitlist, and I don't know if your conversations with the city provided any information in response to that.
Yeah, so I, I think we need to make a distinction between the safe parking program, which is, you know, folks enroll and they can safely park overnight, and the one based at the armory where they can basically park for an indefinite amount of time. I think there is a waitlist for the program at the armory, but there is not for the overnight program. And also the overnight armory, the, the program at the armory, I believe, is, is quite expensive. I can't remember the exact amount. That's part of the reason why it hasn't expanded, whereas the one that is just overnight is, is relatively cost-effective.
Okay. So there might be a consideration that if somebody is actively waiting to get into the armory-
I would not be willing to support that, just because, I mean, that's an extremely expensive form of sort of housing support that we've seen, at least the way that program is set up now, and there is, I think, an extensive waitlist. So I don't, you know, if there was, if they were, I think, the, the lower barrier program, I think I, you know, I would consider that, but, yeah.
Okay.
Can I, can I, through the chair, can I make a quick, I mean, sorry to interject, but this, just given the fact that this, the conversation that are happening about, about safe parking programs within my district, and I do just want to say that the city has made it abundantly clear that they, that the programs that they set up and that they are paying for are to try to address the issues that are happening in the city. So I don't want us committing ourselves to saying that we're going to put RVs into programs. We don't have permission to put RVs in their programs. I mean, I think it's a discussion. If we want to go on that route, I'm happy to have that discussion through the one by one, but I just want to make it clear that if, if we're talking about getting, you know, RVs into programs, we should be talking about the programs that the county has set up, which I think Robert Ratner already spoke to, that we have programs to the A F C.
That's fine. I'm, I'm not inclined to make that additional direction today, regardless. Regarding a second comment from a different caller, you know, I, I would encourage, whether it's through a report from the Sheriff's Office or through our annual H four H report that we receive, it would be, I would be interested in hearing kind of at the end of the year, how many vehicles were impacted by this new ordinance? And I'm not sure if that's, you know, if you'd be willing to add that on to additional direction or if it's, you know, I'll come after you and ask you in a year from now. So anyways, I think that concludes my comments. Again, I appreciate my colleagues for bringing this forward and, and helping us get to a resolution.
Supervisor DeSerpas?
Thank you. I'll be supporting this ordinance today because I don't, to me, this is not sort of a giant catchment for people that are living, happen to live in their cars. This is really to deal with nuisance vehicles that are inoperable, that have been on the streets for an extended period of time. We have, in my district down at Rio Del Mar, we often have campers that are parked along the Soquel Creek, and it, it is a big problem in that area. One of the things, and this is for probably for Robert Ratner, like a report to bring back later, but I'd like to know, we've got, we've got new laws on the books in the state of California which allow for development on faith-based church properties. I'm only aware of one proposed development in District Two for nine units, but this would be a way to really bring more housing for people that need it, because the real problem is that we need more housing for people that are unhoused. So I'd like to know actually how many churches we have or religious institutions in our county, how many of them could potentially be built, and what are the next steps for trying to seed that or help that, those ideas move forward so that we could house some of these people who are in their cars? And you don't have to answer this now, but I would like to hear that at some point when you're in front of us again. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor DeSerpas. Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, I just want to have, Robert, if you could approach the podium, I got a couple of questions before we move forward with a motion on this item. And so I guess the big question I have, items numbers, number four is direction for the county's Housing for Health staff to coordinate with the City of Santa Cruz, staff to engage with participants in the safe, city safe parking program to connect them with existing housing-related supportive services and resources. I'm just curious if you can speak to what is actively occurring? And I know that the city has, you know, back when I was in city council, we had 14 million from John Laird, we, you know, had a number of outreach teams that were hired, they passed Measure L, there's a lot of funding going towards homelessness. So I'm just wondering if you could speak to kind of the relationship between county services and how they interact with folks in the armory and the different parking programs? I know that the kind of low barrier ones, those tend to have less engagements because it's more, less like overnight, but I'm wondering if you could maybe speak to county's interaction with city on some of these issues?
Thanks for the question Supervisor Cummings. So in addition to the one-by-one meeting that you mentioned that you participated in, I meet twice a month with Larry and staff from the City of Santa Cruz to coordinate it around our efforts to help people experiencing homelessness within the City of Santa Cruz. And I do the same with Watsonville, city manager and their staff. And I think you all are aware that the number of people who are living unsheltered exceeds our capacity to outreach and engage them because of resource issues. However, in the City of Santa Cruz, they've invested in their own city staff-funded outreach team to help respond to vehicles and people living in shelter. They also have partnered with our Behavioral Health Department on an outreach program in the downtown area. And we manage something called coordinated entry, where we train and support staff in terms of how to engage and connect people with county-funded and federally-funded resources to help people experiencing homelessness. And we are continuing to partner with the city to help their staff learn about that process and engage people through coordinated entry. And we partner with United Way and 211. If you go to their website, there's a forum on there where referrals can be made. If the board did adopt a direction in the recommended actions, I would have myself and staff just reinforce the current approaches and systems we have available to connect people to resources. And I think we would explore ways to try to get some better data, because I imagine you'd want to see like how many people in a particular situation that already came up in your discussion maybe got connected. And what we'd be able to report back is whether we had capacity at the moment, we got a referral. And that really is fundamentally the issue for us is, it's not that we don't want to go out and engage, it's we don't have enough staff capacity to meet the demand.
Right. And I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that this, what's being recommended is already what's happening. And so it's pretty much a duplication of effort. And personally, I mean, given that the city has resources and they have people that are already engaged in that work, I mean, it makes more sense that for the unincorporated area that we're focusing, the Housing for Health Division's efforts on the folks within the unincorporated area. And I think, you know, what's, what this ordinance is kind of trying to address is, you know, if people are staying in abandoned cars, they need outreach to occur. So why would we want to divert our resources to the two cities when it's clear that we need those resources within the unincorporated area right now? So I think that given that, you know, what we've just heard from Robert Ratner, items four, five, and then I will say that we are already working on six as well, we've been having those discussions, I'd ask that four through six, that we'd separate one, two, and three from four, five, and six. And I would move that we table four, five, and six, just given that we already have that, this effort is already occurring. And so I think that, you know, we could bring back more data, that makes sense, but providing direction on something that's already happening just doesn't make sense since it's a duplication of efforts. And so I would ask if we could separate that through the chair, one, two, and three, between four, five, and six, and I'm happy to provide additional direction on four, five, and six.
I don't have any questions, I just have a few comments. You know, I appreciate the input from Supervisor Martinez about the comments from the, the women from the Homeless Union about having a yearly review. And, you know, some of the private, private property issues arise a lot in my district, especially on farms across Murphy, aromas within my district, and there are truly abandoned vehicles but on private property. But I think that this does address that portion of it. With that, I don't have any additional comments, but I'd like to see if anyone would like to move the recommended action or-
Chair, point of order, I just ask, I ask a question regarding the, the recommended actions, and I didn't get an answer.
Supervisor Koenig?
I, I have no issue if we vote on some recommended actions separately, so, I mean, to, to honor that request, I'll move recommend action, also, I'll begin by moving recommended actions one through three with additional direction that the Sheriff's Office provide an, an update on its vehicle abatement program and the impact of this ordinance in particular during the 26, 27 draft budget hearings.
I'll second.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor DeSerpas?
Chair, can I get clarity on the motion? Because I think there was discussion about separating. I, that wasn't clear.
I moved the recommended actions one through three with the additional direction. And I, I do intend to move four through six separately, but-
Okay. Okay, so if I can just make one comment for the record, I appreciate the efforts that's gone into this. I do have some concern with the lang, the way that the ordinance is written, there's no requirement for outreach with people experiencing homelessness. It does not distinguish between RVs and cars. I think that if there were a section to be added that specifically spoke to RVs, oversized vehicles, that had this 72-hour notice and then 10 days on the streets and then went to dismantling, I would not be opposed to that. But this ordinance does not distinguish between cars, vans, and oversized vehicles, and for that reason, I'm not going to support it. But I do, but I, I would have been able, you know, been happy with making a motion to add additional language, but since this is where the board's at, I'm going to be voting no on the recommended actions between one, two, and three.
Thank you Supervisor Cummings. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor DeSerpas?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye.
Motion passes with one dissenting vote Supervisor Cummings.
Chair, if I may, I'd like to now move items, or recommended actions, four through six.
Second.
So we have a motion for items four and six separately. We have a motion from Supervisor Koenig and a second from Supervisor Martinez, sorry.
And for four, that was four, five, and six.
Four, yeah, four through six, four, five, and six.
Supervisor DeSerpas?
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes with one dissenting vote, supervisor, from Supervisor Cummings. And that concludes today's regular agenda. This meeting is now adjourned, 10:25. And our next meeting will be a special board meeting at 1:30, 1:00 PM, 1:30 PM, Monday, October 7th, that's today, at Hotel Paradox Autograph Collection at 611 Ocean Street, Room Sequoia C in Santa Cruz, California, 95060. This reminds me of the Zach Friend days, 10:25.